Okay, this was a Sunday morning, I said let's try it again. Good evening, everyone. How are you all doing? We want to welcome you tonight to this very important conversation. This very important dialogue, we thank you for each of your time, your time and commitment to share with us in this experience. I am Pastor John Kennedy, the pastor of the Hurry Baptist Church. I want to welcome you and we want to be here tonight on behalf of the Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind Community Advocate Group. We want to thank you for taking your time to share with us in this evening for this very important conversation and dialogue for us to be able to hear from the candidates what it is they, what their views are as it relates to the city and community and our future generations. I want to pause for a moment to ask those persons who are part of the Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind Community Advocate Group just to stand up so they can see who you are, amen. Amen. So we want to thank, we want to thank them, you can sit down now. We want to thank the candidates, most importantly, for taking the time to be here tonight, to accepting our invitation to share, allowing us to hear from each and every one of you. And again, as Pastor Hurry Baptist Church on behalf of the church, we want to thank you for being here. For those who may be concerned, this is not a church-sponsored event. This is a Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind Community Advocate Group-sponsored event and the church is just opening the doors for us to come together tonight. Now, our purpose of being here tonight is to provide an opportunity for the residents to hear the views, the perspectives, and the ideas of those persons vying for the positions of city council members. We have a series of questions that we want to ask them. And what I'm going to ask, if you in the audience, if you have a particular question that you want to ask a particular candidate, you can feel free to do so afterwards if they're, if they will oblige to answer you one-on-one, amen. The reason for that is, we've allotted seventy minutes for the questions and we have about ten questions already constructed. I think that will pretty much cover the whole spectrum of the room. And so we wanted to have a lot of time for the conversations with the questions that they're going to provide us the answers to. This is not a debate, amen. This is just a forum for the candidates to express their views and once they've expressed their views, then the next person will come up and they will share their views as well. A few housekeeping rules, the restrooms, if you need a restroom, out the doors to the right, the left door to your right, the women's is to the left, the men's is to the right. In the event of an emergency, if we have to run out of here, the exit door to my left over here, to my right rather. If you go out that door, we'll meet at the far end of the parking lot near the red house. If you go out the front door, we'll meet across the street in the grass here, amen. So that's in the event that we have to vacate the place. Hopefully, we won't have to vacate the place. Now, a few ground rules. Number one, we will treat each candidate with respect. We will refrain from vulgar and derogatory comments. The attendees will refrain from interrupting or becoming demonstrative during a candidate's presentation. Again, at the conclusion of the forum, each person in the audience will be able to ask individual questions to a respective council candidate of your choice, two or three if you would like to, if they will oblige to answer you one-on-one if necessary, amen. Okay, since this is a church and I am a pastor, let us start with prayer. Eternal God, we thank you for the privilege tonight to share. We ask you now to gather our hearts, gather our minds, center us into this place. Allow us to be able to hear what needs to be heard. Allow communication to be easy and concise. Allow hearing to be easier and clearer. We thank you for the opportunity you've given us and the gift of leadership. Let us not take it for granted. Bless us now in Christ Jesus' name, amen. All right, here are the guidelines for our forum tonight. Each candidate, at the beginning, will have one minute to state their name, whether they are an incumbent or a newcomer, and they will use one word to tell why they are qualified for the role. After each candidate introduces themselves, they will then have, each candidate will have three minutes to answer the questions that are going to be asked by the moderator. Once everyone has gone through, then we'll move to the next question. We have a timekeeper, Miss Timekeeper, wave your hand. There will be three minutes for you to expound on the question for the sake of time and the number of people. When she raises her hand, that's your cue that you have to bring your presentation to a close. And then at the end, each candidate will have one minute for a closing speech, okay? We want to thank the media for being here as well tonight, Josh, Jenny, and I can't remember the young lady's name.
Kendall.
Kendall, thank you for being here tonight as well. Okay, so we will now turn it over to the candidates. You will each have one minute to state your name, whether you are an incumbent, newcomer, and use one word to tell why you are qualified for the role that you were seeking. Amen, come on in, Mr. Boulton, amen. You got the hot seat right here. And since he just arrived, Chris, we'll start with you and work our way down.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Chris Matthews. I'm a newcomer to the political arena. And one word I would use to describe my qualification is a resiliency. Do we expand on that?
No.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Hope Parker, I'm a newcomer and dedication and being dedicated is mother.
Good evening, Gunna, Jimmy Gray, I'm a current council member. Been on city council since 2016. Ran for a two-year term in sixteen and then a four-year term in eighteen, so for reelection this year. I currently serve as the vice mayor and I've served at the city for the past four years. I represent the city on various boards and commissions such as Hampton Roads Regional Jail, the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, the Hampton Roads Redevelopment Housing Authority, and then I'm involved in the community in various boards and commissions with, you know, primary focus on working with young people. I am president of Hampton Roads Community, two-hundred-plus man organization, has a pre-established ministry program for African-American males. We currently work fifty-one years around the region, twenty-two of our community. And so, I came to city in 2004, 2004 when I signed. I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Experience would be the word I would describe myself.
Oh, the timekeeper's having some pitches on.
Do I have time?
No, you have no time, all right. Go ahead, Ms. Martin.
So are we supposed to just stick to the one word?
Yeah, you're supposed to just stick to the one word.
I'm Martha Boulton and I am not an incumbent on city council. And one word I would use to describe my qualifications for the role is experience.
Good afternoon, Steve Bryan, a newcomer, elected in 2018. I would describe my one word as energetic. That describes me very energetic.
I'll be everybody doing it. On the manly, I am a newcomer. I guess the one word I would say to describe me, why I should be in the position, is passionate. I'm passionate about what I do, passionate about my city, and I'm here working on this getting done successfully.
Even an offset word, sorry.
Good evening, I'm Randy Boulton, I am a newcomer. And one word to describe me would probably be circulate. I lead the community, I'm very passionate about what I do and give advice for the time and concern and I do.
Okay, thank you candidates for introducing yourselves and for expounding on your qualifications. We will now begin the questioning portion. Again, each candidate will have to answer the same question. We may not go through all ten questions on this list, but we will address quite a few of these questions on this for the sake of time tonight. You have three minutes to expound on your answer to the question. We ask that you go to the mic so that everybody can hear you clearly and once your time is up, the next candidate will come and they will be able to share their views on the question. The first question we want to ask is, candidates, how would you address social equity within the city land? And we'll begin with Randy. The question is, how would you address social equity in the city of Hampton?
I'll be, it's a Steve, very good chap, sorry for having the mic. Great question, and one more time, please.
How would you address social equity in the city of Hampton?
Simply, great question, city of Hampton, we're very diverse. When we talk about social environment, we, Hampton, we're a place to work, live, play. We have diversity, we're a diverse community. And that's one thing I look about Hampton because of diversity. I believe that we are growing, we need to attract some of the businesses that we can all enjoy, to have the entertainment that we need for everyone to be able to enjoy their employment and to.
All right, in terms of social equity, I'm more just talking about our communication with one another within the community. Our more or less, I'm assuming that's what my question. I don't want this thing to come to communication within our community, we need to improve on that. I mean, once communication with each other, you know, we have our own social circles and we all speak. Once again, with the generation, we have multiple modes of communication. We have the newer TikToks, we have Instagram. There's so many different forms of media that we can use to communicate one another. That's one of the things I want to focus on more or less is engagement. Look, my generation, this newer generation is dealing with something that's different than we had to deal with and I'm dealing with something that my parents didn't necessarily have to do. So once again, what we can do is say, look here, this is the best way that you can go about using the experience and the technology that we were with and how we had to handle it, how we had to navigate our different challenges within the community and it's the best way to do it. So I'm assuming that's what the question and the rest of the question was supposed to go as far as the engagement. Any further question on that, if you want to expand on that, please, I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Great, now, that'd be a great question. In one of my lives, I chaired the Citizens Union Commission. It's a commission that I think there are two in the country that Hampton has. Our commission is designed to bring and foster healthy relationships, communication. That's through respect for different cultures, different religions, different races. It was designed for us to sit down and have that conversation. We learn more about each other by sitting down and talking. I think we got two ears to listen, most of all, and one mouth to respond. And I think the city has done a great job, is doing a great job. I, you know, at one time when I was coming up, we had fair days. Some of those people were fair days and the Department of Defense did that and it brought the community together from all over the city of Hampton. It was fun, it was wholesome. We climbed the greasy pole, we had face paint, we had conversations we hadn't seen since the last high in this town. We'd come together and talk and share. And I think that's how we value our social equity. And respect for each community, no matter where you live, you should have the same opportunities to engage, to participate, to express your opinions. I don't care what your socioeconomic status is, it does not matter, we are one city. And so that's what we need to do and continue to do, and that's what I plan to do as a member of council, that's what I have done. And so I was very proud to serve on that commission there and for multiple years in a row. It received the National League, received its award, it might have received so many awards, they stopped giving it to us. And so, but that's, that's some of the ways that we communicate and talk. Just have a good conversation and respect each position and their experiences and don't judge.
So I have two personal experiences to draw upon when we talk about equity. As I announced, I am not an incumbent on the city council, but I did serve for twelve years on our school board. And when we were working as a school board in this community, we had a lot of talk about equity. And I did a lot of study while on the school board and training about really what equity meant. And it really means, when you have an individual, whether it's a child, in my instance, I was working in the school division, but when you have an individual who is not on the same level playing field, that there are extra things that you do to create equality. So equity leads to equality. And so, an example of equity that I have personal experience with was in the school division. We developed a one-to-one technology initiative that put computers, Chromebooks in the hands of every student, fifth grade through twelfth grade. So it created a level playing field for all those students. In my work at Old Point National Bank, I am one of the employees that was, I've chosen to serve on our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. And we spent about a year having discussions and talking about the kinds of things that we can do in business that make a difference and create equity for all of our employees, creates an equitable situation when we're hiring people. So for me, you know, as if we're talking about social equity, it's creating a level playing field across all zip codes, across all neighborhoods, and across our entire community.
So I want to add a personal story just quickly on what I think social equity is. When I was a staff member, working for, as assistant city manager, you know, one of the issues that members of the old North Hampton community, both for council on many occasions, was the presence of the police department's firing range that was located within that community. And, you know, the rapid gunfire that goes on throughout the day, sometimes into the evening, was very disturbing to the residents. But the issue of moving the gun range or firing range was, the cost was always the reason that was given or why we could not, we couldn't find a location. So fast forward to recently, now that I'm a council member, you know, I had talked to the people in the community and made a commitment that we were going to move their firing range. And so I started contacting my council members to make sure I had enough support. Four of us would agree that we wanted the firing range moved to a new location. And all of them agreed that that was important. Because in today's environment, when too many of our kids have to go late at night and hear gunfire in one in their neighborhoods, they don't need to go to school or live in their house and have our own local law enforcement to, you know, make that kind of disturbance in the community. And so I don't know when and who made the decision that that was the right location in an older, African-American, established neighborhood to have a firing range, but I thought it needed to be moved. So now we're in the process of funding a new, a new firing range, which will be an indoor range, so the noise factor won't be an issue. The Department of Defense read about it in the Department of Defense reason will be located at Fort Moreau. We were able to leverage about seven and a half million dollars in federal funding for it because it will also serve the ranking and Fort Eustis Police Departments. So now we've been able to live up to our commitment of getting that firing range out of the community so the residents. The other thing is, the old North Hampton neighborhood was designated as a housing venture neighborhood. And that means that we have dedicated time and resources to try to stabilize the neighborhood and make it more inviting so that people would want to purchase homes there. And so, who would want to purchase a home in a neighborhood now that you had to listen to gunfire all that long? So I thought that was a social equity issue related to that neighborhood that I personally worked on and advocated for and we were able to honor that commitment to get it. It's not going yet, but it'll be going soon.
When I announced my candidacy on February the eighteenth, one of the statements that I made was, "We are better together", because I firmly believed that. I am a proud graduate of the Hampton Diversity College, Parts One and Two. Looking forward to starting Part Three in the spring. But one of the duties and one of the things that I loved about being in those environments with the Diversity College was it taught you and it made you have serious conversations that maybe have been uncomfortable, but we needed to have. Because that's the only way that we're going to learn to be together and to work, work together socially especially. And so, once you know, we're all going to have differences, but we learn to work with those differences where we are. You have to meet people where they're at. So if we continue to do that, I respect you, you respect me, but we're all here for the common good of making this city better. So as long as we know that, we keep that as the focus, we will continue to know and to be great at working better together.
So equity is making sure that we all are presented with the same opportunity to do it in the city the same way. So as a citizen, right now, I'm at every single city council meeting and I see members of your community at every single city council meeting as well. I'm there presenting observations and solutions to each one. One example is, I saw that Buckgrove Beach, they installed handicapped wheelchairs to get beach access for. But I heard complaints that there weren't, there wasn't a reasonable way to get access to those once somebody needed them. So I presented the city council that we should have a three-or-one hotline as a dispatch for getting those seats to people so that they had just as much access to the beach as everyone else. And everything we do is all about making sure that our neighbors are more comfortable in their day-to-day life. We clean up our communities, we make sure that when we present the best community, that we're involved in our community. And when we're involved in our community, we notice more problems and we can identify and we can all come up with solutions to those problems. But it takes ability, this is Hampton as a whole. This is how we give our neighborhoods and communities more, more of a leg to stand on so that way they can participate and know that they're being taken seriously as members of the community. So to conclude, I guess, we need to make sure that we're communicating, that we are listening to each other, that we are able to hear and implement the needs of each other when we point them out. And that's done by every member of the community, including council and women. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Chris, you can stay right there since you're already up. The next question to be answered is, as a legislative body for the city, what priorities do you feel the city should be most focused on? As a legislative body for the city, what priorities do you feel the city of Hampton, city council should be most focused on?
I think our top priority right now is getting back to basics. City government is a service and we can make sure that we're providing that service to everyone. That our stormwater drainage is up to par, maintained and able to. We have Hampton Resiliency Program and we can improve on that by first facing what we have and then identifying how that fits into the Hampton Resiliency Program and how we can improve it. We need to make sure that our police force is kept up to par and that we have a shortage of police officers right now and that that can be improved on. And I know it's being worked on, but these are the things we need to do. Competitive pay for police, firemen, emergency services, all the basic services that cities supplies to its people. And then after that, we can start looking at everything else, you know. When we have things like the AquaPlex and the Boob Williams Sports Plex and all these other community centers all over the city, then we can start making sure that those are well-funded and that they have good activities that entice our youth to come out and make sure that they are in a safe environment to enjoy each other's company and have a great time. That's where I would end it.
I would say the legislative body we need to prioritize is on minimizing our crime. Even though our crime rate is going down, we need to definitely continue to enhance those mechanisms that are requiring our crime rate to go down. We need to be sure that we are supplying our youth with the services, the resources that they need and especially supporting those organizations and also with funding that support our youth. Also, making sure that the Hampton Police Division is fully stacked and fully funded, that they have everything that they need from equipment and training in order to make their jobs better. As far as, and especially having stiff prosecution, working with the courts, making sure that people are being held accountable for the things that they do within the city. As well as also making sure that we're staying in contact with our neighborhoods, our neighborhood associations, as well as our neighborhood watch groups. Making sure that we are letting them know what's going on here within the city and especially with the patrolmen that are designated to those areas. But making sure, even though in real time, dealing in, in real time, letting them know what's going on within their designated areas. But also, we need to increase our tax base, either with retail, jobs, housing, and tourism. As far as jobs, we need to be sure that we are definitely up on our workforce development and our business retention. As far as retail is concerned, revitalizing those businesses too. And also with our housing, making sure that we are improving our housing stock, revitalizing that, providing ways that we definitely can upgrade and help our citizens to bring their homes up to code. And as far as the tourism, we need to be sure that we continue to improve on our hotel stock because we definitely need hotels. We have four major venues within the city with Boob Williams, the Hampton Roads Convention Center, we have the Hampton Coliseum, and now we have the AquaPlex. And all of those places are going to draw people, but where are they going to stay when they come here? Because, you know, a lot of times now, over forty percent of the people go to other cities because they don't have anywhere to stay within the city of Hampton whenever, whenever that they come. So we want to be sure that we're definitely applying in our housing stock with that. Thank you.
Well, I think in a good governing body would coalesce around seven strategic priorities to move their city forward. And we have done that as a council here in Hampton. We have seven strategic priorities, they are a safe and clean community. Placemaking, and placemaking is creating nice spaces where people can come out of their homes and enjoy such as the beaches and the parks that we have. Economic growth, of course, is that we've got to grow the economy here. We've got to diversify our revenue stream so that so much of the burden of funding city government doesn't fall disproportionately on any one group of people. And then, of course, the big one, of course, is living with water or living with the threat of sea level rise and other extreme weather effects. And then we have educated and engaged citizenry, excellence in government, and economic empowerment and self-sufficiency. And that is the focus on making sure that no one gets left behind. And we think that, you know, everybody is, and our city is valued. So we want to be intentional about our efforts to reduce poverty and move our citizens, make them aware of and give them access to the resources that are available to move into the mainstream and enjoy a good quality of life. And so if you look in our budget document, you will see that, you know, the funding that we have appropriated this year and other budget years, our. and other budget years are earmarked toward or investments in, uh, projects and programs that are in those seven strategic areas. And so, uh, we can, uh, sometimes we have other council members who do bring new initiatives forward. But I think in order for us to be focused on the work that we're doing and how we grow our city and grow our economy has to be very intentional. And so we're, uh, pretty solid around the seven strategic priorities that we have identified. And that's where we're making our investment. We, we think that's been working good for us and will continue to serve us well into the future.
So, um, the priorities that I, uh, would see for, uh, for city council as a legislative body would be crime reduction, um, particularly with a focus on, um, on gun violence reduction. We, um, have many citizens who are very, very concerned about that particular issue. And Hampton has undertaken, uh, an engagement with Harvard Bluebird for, um, work on gun violence prevention. A research-based approach to that issue and, um, and, uh, we need as a city to really get behind that effort. Um, we also need to be looking at our, um, our pay for, um, police and all, um, public safety and make sure that we have competitive, um, pay structures for, uh, for hiring and retaining the employees that we have in, in, um, public safety. Uh, we also need to make sure that we're looking out for, um, pay compression when the pay scale gets compressed and somebody who's been working for ten years is making the same pay as somebody new come in. So you've gotta look at all those things and make sure that we're, you know, really taking care of those people and making sure that we have the best, um, uh, police force and, and fire and safety possible. Um, also, economic development is very important for this community. Uh, we are not where we need to be as a community in terms of our economic development. Um, we have some real assets in Hampton, um, our proximity to, uh, the border of Virginia. But we also have NASA Langley Research here and, um, opportunities to really engage and, um, and dovetail with that research aspect of, um, of Hampton's, uh, really great asset of NASA being here and attracting businesses that will, um, complement that. Also, defense contractors that are attached to, to Langley Aerospace, um, really concentrating on, on drawing in and attracting those kinds of businesses to the community. So that we do balance out our tax base and level it out in a way that doesn't leave a huge tax burden on our citizens. Um, coastal resiliency is very, very important to Hampton. We're surrounded by water, we're, um, we're, uh, living with water and we are experiencing a lot of flooding. Uh, so flooding mitigation is something that the city has, uh, really got to focus on and make sure that we are, um, are addressing that in very progressive ways. Um, it's not just, uh, and, and it's not just a flood that occurs and it causes infrastructure damage, it causes damage to your economy, uh, and, and, and imposes health risks to individuals. Is, is that a stop or is that a, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, good question. Um, Hampton is a very, very progressive city. And, uh, one of the things that I learned some years ago when I had a meeting with a bunch of realtors who were talking about Hampton and how they present Hampton to prospective newcomers here. And they asked three questions. They asked first of all about education in the schools. I'm proud that Hampton has an awesome school system, a percent of credit. School board members from here tonight are there to school board meaning, making our schools still the best, unconditional accreditation. Uh, so that's one thing. Definitely they asked about was your housing stock. Hampton is built out of ninety-five, almost ninety percent built out, so we gotta do a lot of redevelopment. And hopefully we, we don't have very large, large tracts of land, uh, to attract some of the major operations like Google and Microsoft and these places, uh, that will come to some of the larger communities. So, schools, housing, and then the third thing they asked about was crime. If your school is good, yes. If your housing stock is good, great. If your crime is troubling, and crime is up, Hampton becomes a pass-through and not a destination. Uh, I wanna make Hampton a destination. Uh, you know, some of the things we talked about was crime. I wanna be able to make sure that we produce programs in place to reduce crime. They are, they are data-driven. The data drives the progress. So if I say I'm gonna reduce crime by whatever the circumstances are, I wanna be able to hold folks accountable who do these programs. Come out and say, okay, you said you could do A, B, and C, show me where you made improvements. That's where you put your money. You just stop putting your money in the basket holes and you're just throwing money out because you have it. Other than Hampton concentrates on, and need to continue to do is county improvement projects. There's a lot of group projects that council members prior to meeting council have talked about. And some of those become a deflation, but some of those projects can get pushed back because something else comes up with a higher priority. But when you talk about mitigating flooding, you talk about social equity, balancing neighborhoods, making sure that you're fair. When, when neighbors get their houses flooded, it's traumatizing. You've really got insurance and jobs that you have in your carpet and your garage and all this, your infrastructure, it's still traumatizing. And so, uh, when we look at how we mitigate flooding through resistance program, let's look at how we put money into green infrastructure, gray infrastructure, brown infrastructure. And make sure because in about twenty fifty, I believe it is, sea level rise is gonna get to the roof four or five feet higher than what is expected now. And so we've gotta be proactive and get ahead of that now. So, uh, again, Hampton has a lot of opportunities for, uh, we need to look at how we, uh, look at jobs, model simulation jobs, high-tech jobs, cybersecurity, uh, these are high-paying jobs. As I take my seat, high-paying jobs, they're affordable, they're good because they get it this out. Thank you.
So I said that, I think, about this question a lot, right? And for me, the one thing I always wanted growing up, the one thing my parents always want, the one thing most people I know want, they want communication, they want engagement. I'm not sure everybody here knows, half our budget comes from, not real estate, but property taxes. Okay, great. What are we getting for our property taxes? What do we know, what, what can't we sit back and what, what are we showing you that you're getting for your money, right? Great, we got a big thirty million dollar bathtub downtown. That's awesome. But if we were to sit back and engage you all and sit back and talk to you all, we'll sit back and find out that for the most part, nobody wanted that. What do we want? You wanna teach our kids how to swim? How about we fix the pools in our communities? How about that? You wanna sit back, you want our kids to have something to do? Cool, let's fix up somebody's place. How about we get a basketball court? How about when I sit back and I see senior citizens, I see my parents, and they're gonna walk around the half the tracks that have holes and pop holes? How about our roads that have pop holes and everything else? That's one of the things I'm gonna do. I'm gonna gauge you all, see what you all want, see what I can do for you, and let's execute that. Sorry. All right. So, I got my AARP card and I'm thinking, wow, I'm gonna get some discounts. But guess what? The discount doesn't come with, comes down to taxes, paying taxes. So our tax base is gonna grow, meaning property taxes, if we don't get businesses in it and the city can. Let's look around. I'm gonna take you around real quick because I have one minute. As a business owner, this is what I do and what I want to do as a councilman. I want to do a small business incubator in one of these dilapidated buildings that we have around here. So people like you can come and learn how to open a business, one-stop shop. If you look around in Hampton, you go to Pennington Town Center, there are over eighteen stores that have closed. If you go down Mercury Boulevard, we have an excessive amount of oil change places, an excessive amount of car washes. We can do better. What we need to do is come together, economic development, we need to be sending letters on the phone, finding out how we can get better businesses, five-star restaurants, five-star hotels, so people can come in here and drive our economy. Sixty-four is a parking lot from Williamsburg all the way to the Hampton Roads Tunnel. There's not one sign that says shop here, stop here, play here. We can do better. If we don't, our taxes are gonna go up. Hampton has a good plan for a five-year, ten-year, and twenty-year plan, but we need a plan right now that's gonna help grow the economy. If you look at the news, the news tells you that there are gonna be no more Black Friday opening on a lot of retailers. Why? Because people are shopping from home. The morning, the brick and mortar, they're going away. So we need to grow Hampton within ourselves. We need to dig deep in, hey, you know how to fix this, you know how to fix it. There's an opportunity. Go down to this incubator and let's open your business and let's support each other. That's how we can grow Hampton. Hampton, we are a beautiful city, we are on a decline with our crime. Our commissioner, our chief, we need to praise him because out of the seven cities, we have the lowest crime rate and that is commendable. In the churches, they say joy come in the morning, it will be joy in the morning. If I can turn on my TV and not see any crime, that's what I'm gonna say.
Thank you, candidates. Uh, Martha, we'll begin with you first on this question here. Um, it was mentioned, Martha mentioned, uh, communication. And the question is, what steps would you take to encourage solicit, involve residents in the decision-making process in our city? Uh, historically, there has been a gap in, uh, community input as it relates to major decisions um, that affect the community overall. So the question is, what steps would you take to encourage solicit and/or involve residents in the decision-making process in our city? We'll start with Martha and do this table here and then we'll start, when this table finishes, then we'll go to Mr. Gray and we'll finish with Chris.
Thank you. Uh, you know, one thing I'll start off with is that, um, the city of Hampton has won awards towards budgeting process and it's for its community engagement component of that, um, process. Uh, the city manager goes out into the community and presents the budget and answers questions in, uh, many parts of the city, all over the city. There are also, um, surveys that go out, um, for people to take and, um, electronically, online. Um, now the lead paper surveys are also available. Um, so I start by, by saying that because I do think there are some really good examples of Hampton really working to engage citizens. Um, I think sometimes, um, individuals might not be aware that there's, um, an e-newsletter, um, or some of those things. And so I think we can go, you know, a few steps farther with, um, different things like even a billboard that talks about our three-one-one call center, that, uh, a billboard that might provide the link for the, um, e-news, um, looking at using our three-one-one call center and calling out to our citizens and advising them when these public hearings are occurring. Um, and just to encourage citizens to come out on particular issues. Uh, that system is very robust and can be used in a lot of different ways. Um, using PAG TV, um, that's the, the city's television, uh, station. But using that as a way to promote, uh, all the engagement opportunities that there are for citizens, um, to, to become involved in. And, uh, and, you know, it is, uh, important that as a public body, that we have public hearings, that we go to where people are, meet people where they are and, and make sure that we are engaging. And when, when the city is not doing that, then, you know, citizens like yourselves need to speak up and say, hey, I didn't know about that. Um, but, you know, there are, um, lots of methods of communication in place right now. I do think we could probably do, you know, better work at, at, um, getting, um, you know, communicating that those, those lines of communication exist. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Uh, just wanna tell you that Hampton has a neighborhood office that, uh, they have ten district commissioners throughout the city in every neighborhood. And those commissioners have to use me to conduit for information. If you got a concern, you got a question, uh, they can research and search it up for you and get you a good answer. Other thing I wanna tell you too, you need to be involved with boards and commissions in our city. We got a lot of them. And, uh, we keep recycling people, same people. Uh, and so we're looking for new people, looking for you, looking at everybody, we're looking for you, uh, to get involved with these boards and commissions. So if you can have a voice, you can be in the know, you can speak for your community. Other thing I wanna tell you too is that, uh, Hampton, again, is legendary for, uh, its communication, uh, how we get things out. Everybody has the internet, everybody watches TV. Uh, I wanna invite each and every one of you, every second and fourth Wednesday night, you need to come to city council meeting. That's where you get a lot of information, a lot of things, a lot of moving parts. And also I'm a substitute council member. You can call me. You can call on our direct cell number and call me. I don't know everything, but I can certainly answer questions for you, get you to the right people, get you the right result. And so that's how we communicate. Uh, we send out notices. Sometimes people don't get those, the mail is slow. Uh, sometime your TV channel's not working like the, uh, challenge team wasn't working up tonight. When the Cowboys, also Phil, he was upset about that, so, so sometimes things just don't work your way. But, uh, neighborhood associations, civic groups, uh, the, uh, group for the deaf blind, I'm trying to think of a group that sponsors tonight, there are ways to get your message out in here. And all, if all this fails, you got a big mom in that window looking at everything and knowing everything. And she can tell you what's going on in the community. So, don't just stand back and say, let them do it. Say, let us do it together. Thank you.
That's a very easy question, or very easy question to answer. Once again, wear your conduits, wear your vehicles. So, I have three kids. My kid's a school age, oldest is ten, second is six, youngest is four. They do sports, they go to school. I know, not everybody can make it downtown at six thirty between work, traffic, and everything else with kids. So you know what? I come to you. On weekends, you guys pay me to work for you. So, hey, I'll come around and go on weekends and you can come talk to me and tell me whatever concern that you have. If we need to mount things out, we can mount things out. There's this thing called the internet. There's this thing called social media, Instagram. I know the younger kids, younger than me, sit back and use TikTok and some other before I have no idea what it is and I'm gonna add it, I'm lost. But, once again, there's multiple ways that we can get our message out. And there never should be a situation where something's being built and you have absolutely no idea what it is. Or, once again, I know they got a big mom and maybe somebody else can tell you what that is. If they're tearing something down, something's getting built, I'm looking over there, my kids are everyday, what in the world is that? I have absolutely no idea. And for those who don't know, down there in, uh, Pennington Town Center, that's actually gonna be a rock wall. So I'm not sure if anybody knew that, but that's, that was, I did know the tag. Look it up. So, that's my whole thing. I'm your vehicle, I'm your conduit. Come talk to me. That's all I say. Because once again, if you have two of these chefs in the kitchen, nothing gets me. Thank you. I think a lot of us will probably share some of the same, uh, answers. Um, but one thing I'm gonna say is, uh, there's three-one-one, there's the Hampton dot V A app. We can also, we've talked about, um, visiting churches, visiting wrecks, going to, uh, farms. But one thing we haven't talked about is going to the people. We expect the people to come to us, but everybody can't come to a meeting. So we need to go back to the community and inform them of what's going on so they can be there and know, and their voices be heard. A prime example, prime example, and I'm proud to say this. There is something going on in our community and I was on the scene. The farm was actually held at my restaurant. And it was concerning the deaf and blind school. And the president of NAACP called and said, can we host this forum? And I said, any forum you wanna hold in Hampton, you can hold it at my restaurant with no charge. No one really was there from Aberdeen, but I spoke up. I brought some concerns to the developer. I had fifteen questions. The developers said that they would get back with me so I could relay that information to the community. That's concerning because they have got, got back to me. What are you hiding? Hmm? What are you hiding? That's a concern because of a lot of reasons. So sometimes, but at instances like that, if we knew that we were gonna have such a major event, a forum, that impacted the lives of people on Aberdeen and Shell Road and the surrounding areas, we need to go to the community. You can't always expect the community to come to you. We go to the community when we want your votes. We need to do it in return. But we need something and know something that's seriously happening in our neighborhoods that's gonna impact everyone. Thank you.
Um, if you look on my, um, mail that's on the table back there, I have, uh, six priorities that I wanna focus on, you know, and should I be elected? If you look on my mail that's on the table back there, I have six priorities that I want to focus on, you know, and should I be elected for another term? And one of those is neighborhoods. And that's because I believe strong neighborhoods make strong cities. And what I've come to learn over the years, and not only my time in the council, but working in city staff as well, is that not all neighborhoods are represented equally in terms of the engagement, the organization. And so sometimes the flow of information doesn't work as well with those neighborhoods to have strong associations. We get those very nice neighborhoods that are not organized. And I know that they are because I've been invited out. I've walked neighborhoods. I've walked drainage channels. I've attended neighborhood association meetings. And so, and what I've learned is that what we need to do is to be a little more intentional and have our staff that is assigned to working with neighborhoods to do more in terms of getting those other neighborhoods engaged. Because sometimes, again, you know, we, I think we as a city, as was previously mentioned, we, you know, won awards for our, our community engagement around the budget. Recently, when we did the Buckrow Boardwalk renovation, we had several community meetings, invited the community out and got input on that. When we were planning to sell our boat ramp and build a new boat ramp, and we put advisory committee together to talk to us about that. But neighborhood engagement is what we do. Now, we have a neighborhood office, and that neighborhood office is responsible for helping neighborhoods become stronger ability capacity so that they can have that representation. So I think that's extremely important to improving the way that we communicate from the city down to the neighborhood and from the neighborhood back to the city government, is to have that organization in place to allow that ease of communication to flow. And so my commitment going into the next term is to continue to work toward re-staffing our neighborhood office. During the recession, we were making significant budget cuts to, to deal with the issues in the economy. We had to reduce the staffing in the neighborhood office. So we're trying to return that staffing to what it was so that that neighborhood services office can continue to serve the citizens the way it should. So I look forward to supporting that in my next term. Thank you.
You know, in a full community is a healthy one. And it is very important, especially with local government, because people want to have trust, transparency, and confidence within the local government. So it is very important that we continue with enhancing, as it has been previously mentioned. Our city manager does a, a good job, I think, concerning the budget season. You know, she lets us know about, I've been to one when she had one this, this, this year. With the budget, you know, getting community input as well as letting them know the major decisions that are going on that we want to definitely get the citizens involved in things that matter to them. It is very important that we do, that we do that pertaining to letting them know, as it was mentioned, about boards and commissions. I'm currently on, you know, boards and commissions. That's how you get, get further involved. Neighborhood associations, going to a neighborhood watch, you know, definitely getting involved in, in those things. Because that's how you know about your own neighborhood as well as, as others. But also, us going to those senior living places where some, some of them can't come. But they all gather, you know, throughout the week, they have some, some place within that, that place that they go. And so that we can go to them and let them know exactly what is going, going on. And so I think it's very imperative that we currently still enhance what is going on within, within our city as well as, as a neighborhood. Letting your neighbors know what's, what's going on within your neighborhood, you know? Because we all had a nosy neighbor, you know? We had a nosy neighbor that knows everything. And I'm gonna give you a perfect example. Someone was visiting at, at my home and they were from out of town and they were in, they were in my yard. And so my neighbor saw them when she was walking her dog. And so she walked back in my yard and she said, who are you? Why are you a hopes yawn? And so they said, uh, I'm, I'm visiting. I'm from out of town. She was like, what is your name? So we need to make sure that there were also, that were also protected and taking care of our neighborhood. Because that's very, very important. But also, just, you know, telling everyone about what's going on within the city. Whether or not you're on a board, a public hearing, making sure that you, you know, know about what's going on on council. So I, I believe that those things can be enhanced. And sometimes the participation is low. So we need to be sure that we act, act with the staff of finding innovative ways to get people out and to know about those events that are going, going on. Thank you.
So if we can be frank, most of our neighbors don't pay attention, so that makes communication difficult. In my experience, every time after a few hours I go to Buckrow, I'll grab a trash bag and grab it. I'll start picking up cigarette butts or whatever. And I've talked to so many people who didn't know that parking ordinances were changed until after it had already been enacted. When we had, you know, everyone had plenty of opportunity to go and say it because the communication was low. I'm sure that there's people in your neighborhood as the School for Deaf and Blind advocacy group that you guys have met people in your own neighborhood who didn't know what you're doing and how you're working. And this is because we, we need to rethink how we engage people. We're not gonna engage people by sending out newsletters and emails. Most of it ends up in the trash and it's wasted. Emails, most people's inbox is already overloaded. But we do, as a city, a pretty good job of throwing these parties down in Little Point, down, in downtown Hampton, in Buckrow. And there's groups like the Ever, the, the Ever, they throw really good parties too. And those are how we get our message out. Because that's the people who are already active in your community. Those are the people who are already getting involved. So if we can organize our message every time, whether it's even the simplest little ordinance issue, you know? Parking your car in your yard. That can be a part of these, these, these parties, these groups, these announcements. And then people know, and they can start getting involved. They can start being a part of the process that they may have not even thought to be a part of before. Being involved in your neighborhood, being involved, my way is cleaning up. I've talked to so many people. And a lot of people, I don't even have to engage a conversation. People approach me asking what I'm doing, why I'm doing it. And that starts a conversation right there. And people learn a lot just from being receptive, being active, being out, being visible. And you can teach your neighbors. I try to teach mine whenever I have an opportunity to. And when we have a bigger platform, we can do more. Thank you.
This time we'll start with Ms. Hope, from Hope to Steve, Mr. Gray, to Martha, Chris, Randy, and Martha will close this out with this question. I hope y'all can remember you. It's been mentioned, it's been mentioned that ordinances is one of the major priorities of City Council as well as zoning. And so we would like to know tonight, what are your views on rezoning established residential communities for the purpose of commercial development? And we'll start with you, Ms. Hope.
Yes, ma'am. What are your views on rezoning established residential communities into commercial development?
That's a really good question. But my view on that, if it's a residential area, rezoning a business, this is part of the community, being part of the decision-making process. We need to know if it's beneficial to the city, if it's beneficial to the citizens, is there a need for it? You know, so we have to definitely get the community involved in the decision-making process with, with that. Because when you rezon for business purposes, you have to be sure that what you're doing is not impacting the citizens. Because they have to know, you bring a business there, but these people live here. You know, the businesses, they work there, but they go home to wherever that they live. These people live in the neighborhood. So we need to know how it's gonna impact them, is it beneficial? And, and does it benefit the citizens or the city as definitely a hope? So that is one example of definitely making it be a part of the decision-making process. But it would just depend on that, on those, on those things, whether or not I would support the rezoning.
Thank you. I feel like I'm gonna race and relate. Thank you for passing the time. You know, this is a very complex question because neighbors live here, raise their children here, go to school here, come home and to a safe place, where they call a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood. And then one day you look out your back door and you see structures, you see cranes, you see excavation, you see beams, and you see wood, trucks, and combustion, and gas, and, you know, stuff, pipes and stuff happening. All of a sudden, wow, what happened to our neighborhood? When you talk about rezoning your neighborhood, you have to have folks who have endorsed it first of all and can buy into the project. And promises made should be promises gathered. And so I'm telling you right now that I'm very reticent when constituents come to me and neighbors come to me and say, listen, this is our neighborhood. We, we live here. We, we, we invest here. And if we're not involved in the process, it's like this. If you come to the table and you're not at the table, I will store that you're in the menu. So you, you need to be involved. And this is when your voice is important. Your voice, your power, your vote is important. To speak truth, to speak your truth, and to make sure that whoever comes into any community, that it is a win-win for the neighborhood. Give you a good example. My time is almost running out. The developer will come in and develop a particular structure or property, and they go back home. They don't live here, okay? But the neighbor lives here, stays here, and, and invests here. But you built this big structure and you're going to the next project. Bricks and mortar gonna have compassion and feeling and guts. People do. And if it's worth fighting for, fight for it and make your voice known. So I think when you see a rezoning or an application for a rezoning, speak out if you don't agree with it. Other thing I want to tell you too, and I did mention about one of the other questions too, keep up the city council minutes. Read the minutes. Read about the community plan. You know, read them and research them and ask questions. So when you come into a forum like this or a city council meeting, you know what you're talking about. You've done your research. And so I just think that's important that you stay abreast of the facts and keep your eye on the project.
So, you know, I think that question really kind of goes to an earlier question about how do you involve citizens in the decision-making process? And rezonings of properties just that. We don't, we don't rezon entire established neighborhoods. You rezon a vacant property. That's the only opportunity to do that. So, you know, Hampton is a, you know, almost fully developed city. And so the opportunity to attract new commercial development, new residential development, or any other type of development is, in some regards, very limited. So we have to evaluate every proposal based on, well, I think, three things. One is, is, is the proposal the highest investment use for the property involved? Two, is there a significant benefit to the citizens and, and the city of Hampton? And the third thing is, you know, is, is there a cost? What is the, what is the ask of the city to, to support the particular developer? And it may be streets and highways, it may be incremental tax deferments and so forth. But those are all the factors that go into doing that. And the planning commission is responsible for looking at those rezonings to see if they comply with, one, the community plan, two, the master plan, and three, the zoning code itself. And so they look at those. And then it comes over to the city council. We are able to look at other factors that may be, such as impact on the community itself or other significant factors to consider. But there is a lot that goes into making that decision, is to get those decisions is not taken lightly. And so I think you have to evaluate everyone. And, and, and at the end of the day, the public hearings that occur at the planning commission and at the city council meetings and the comments that we receive from the citizens who, who, who contact us about those, we do take serious and we do take those into consideration. So taking in all the information that you can before making a decision will kind of get you to the best decision for everybody involved. Thank you.
Mr. Parker, you mind reading that question one more time? I want everybody to listen to this question.
Sure. The question is, what are your views on rezoning established residential communities for the purpose of commercial development?
My job. Everybody remember that? What's, what's, what's my now, what my job was? Exactly. Comcave Center, Park Home, and everything else like that, right? What happened to those citizens? Some of those were my friends going to school with. Where'd they go? Did we provide them assistance? There is, to my opinion, if it's a household, if it's a residential neighborhood, there's no way I'm gonna kick you out to build some type of residence, some type of business opportunity or something like that. You're a person. You're a part of my community. You're one of my fellow friends, my citizens, my, you know, my family. I'm not gonna kick you out and put a building up. Sorry. That's all I got.
So at these city council meetings, when you watch people who come there in large groups, you always see them at their worst because there's a residential resoning or something coming in their neighborhood that they don't want. You don't get to see people at their best at these meetings. This is when they're emotionally distraught and they're always at the top of their head. So, why are we asking the developers to come in and petition a neighborhood for the development of a property that immediately affects the area of that property? You know, because I had to petition to even stand here today. And if you want to make a change at city council, you have to petition, even get a document. So we can look at different opportunities or ways, methods to get developers to interact with our neighbors, our community members. We could, we can ensure that we have better communication, because this leads directly back to the previous question. Better communication with our neighborhoods to make sure that they have every opportunity to participate in redevelopment, rezoning, and everything that would affect their direct neighborhood. Maybe we could waive one-time permit fees for watch captains or neighborhood association leaders to have a block party where they can disseminate this information, make sure that it's available to everyone. So that way, it's easy to communicate at. We don't have to make things difficult. We can make things easier starting at the ground level where you would.
Oh man, I love this question. Love it. So first of all, we need to find out if it's a need for the community. Does the community want it? Then we need to find out, have we communicated it to the community? Have we talked to them? So, this is twofold. Zoning. Zoning could be something as simple as escape lane, which in my opinion, we would need. Zoning could be something as simple as an area that doesn't have a grocery store and they have to travel ten miles or fifteen miles away. That is needed. But when you start talking about an environment where warehousing could come, a factory could come. I'm not sure I'm gonna vote that way, but I'm, but I'm gonna ask you citizens. But this is what we have to also realize in being in business and being a leader in Fortune 500 companies. They talked about two hundred and fifty jobs coming to the proposed site where the deaf and blind school was. Two hundred and fifty jobs. It sounds like a lot. But understand this, on the chart that they had, they talked about Walmart, they talked about Target. I know firsthand because I was on a committee where we tried to bring a warehouse
I know firsthand, because I was on a committee where we tried to bring a warehouse to Hampton in Copen Park that we're looking at land. But what we don't understand about that 250 jobs, they paid a minimal wage because it would be ran by a third party. Do we need that? No. That's what we have to start looking at when we start talking about jobs. Find out what it's gonna pay, but going back to the question, we need to ask the citizens what they want. And if the citizens are in agreement 100%, I would. But again, zoning, we have to look at the need for that area and the benefit from it.
Thank you. It's really important to be very deliberate about making a decision of changing zoning from residential to commercial. It is very emotional because people live in a particular neighborhood or site. And so, you know, we all have strong feelings about the history of where we are and the value of our property. All those things are very important to us. You know, I don't believe in changing residential neighborhoods to commercial by eminent domain, which is the kind of project that occurred a number of years ago here in Hampton. None of these incumbents were on the council at the time, but it's where Bass Pro was built. And there was, you know, an entire street or two that was, you know, bought up and tore down. And so I don't believe in those kinds of projects, but we do need to look at the highest and best project for a particular area. So it involves public hearings, engagement with the community members, hearing from the community about what they feel about a particular proposal. You know, one of the things that I didn't talk about when we talk about the communications component tonight, but, you know, one of the things I can say about city council and our boards, their public meetings, our planning commission meetings, our public meetings. So all of those meetings can be attended, or many, and certainly council meetings can be viewed on television on the cable channel. But, you know, it's important for us as citizens to be responsible about kind of listening around our environment and see what's going on. I know that the project here is a very complex one with the Virginia School. It's been going on for a number of years. There was, you know, a parcel that was split into many, many different individuals' purview. And that took a really long time for that to get sorted out. But, you know, I do think that making sure that we're engaging with our neighborhoods and providing an opportunity to voice your opinions, to voice your concerns, and work with citizens, that's the best route we can take.
Thank you, Ken. It's time to go to Marla, Chris, Randy, Ms. Hope, Steve, Mr. Ray. Marco, once again, the next time. Okay. It's been mentioned several times about zoning. And if he could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
I mean, I cannot. My turn. That's right. I think I'm gonna go with you. I cannot say, there are too many zoning ordinances that affect me personally, so I can't really say with all honesty that there are some that I would change. However, that being said, there are some zoning changes that might affect you.
That's something that might affect you most. So once again, that's when we have to get in that community engagement. And I said, hey, look, here, what's the issue? Like IU, perfect example. We're talking about the parking ordinance, right? Sounds simple enough. Hey, you can't park your car here, or you can't do this here, you can't do that, everything has to be on the street. Okay, what about those with boats? What about those who are supposed to be with family? What about those who have RVs or child trailers in case they be and have to park in the yard, but then we have an ordinance saying how far I can or cannot be? Different things like that, right? We gotta look into the totality as far as the effects when it comes to how that affects those people. So once again, that's why I look for you and your engagement and say, look here, this ordinance here is something that affects me like this, affects me like that, and talk to everybody else, and then we can look at changing that.
If anything, we can relook at their ordinances and start reducing and start relooking at how we zone things and look at the needs of the area before we look at what it's exactly zoned for. I listen to people who talk about buying, who already own an auto body shop, buy one 100 yards down the street, and now they're out of zone and they're unable to work that body shop after greatly improving the land, after, you know, owning the property, making sure. These are business owners who would not affect other neighborhoods, but instead they are losing a big portion of their money and livelihood by these decisions. We need to look at everything objectively. If it fits, it sits. We should put it where it belongs. If there's a motivated owner, property owner, who can make something work, who can give greater support to the neighborhood, who can offer a product that is needed in Hampton, then there should be no interference for that person to operate and live a prosperous life. We need to make sure that our ordinances don't affect our neighborhoods. When we add, you know, zoning, you can't park in front of your yard, but some people live on streets where they don't trust other drivers not to be unattentive or inebriated and wreck their cars on the streets. We need to make sure that we're paying attention to the whole picture on everything we do. Because sometimes, to some people, it seems like it's all money, right? When the code enforcement comes into your cul-de-sac where everyone's parked for 15 years facing inwards towards the street and writes up tickets to have a person on that cul-de-sac, that infuriates a neighborhood because they've lived that way for that long and it's never affected anyone but that one neighborhood. So these are things we need to pay attention to when we're thinking about creating ordinance or a new zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. You're fine as a member of the council. We give a lot of staff recommendations, particularly from complaining about the ordinance. And then you look at the ordinance to make sure that it's still relevant, still effective, it's still current, it's still best practices. And I don't know if I can really define the ordinance, the ordinance that I would probably change. I do rely on our staff to give us that intel. They're professionals. They work day-to-day, looking at all this, all of these different changes in ordinances. But there are some things about right. And sometimes I get a call from a citizen. I got a call this morning. And the gentleman said to me, "Councilman Brown, my neighbor's parking their vehicle in front of my walkway." And I'm appalled that there's no ordinance against that. But if everybody called about complaining about something like that, our staff, we did love, was trying to change the ordinance to appease everybody. Our ordinances are designed particularly to make sure that the neighborhood, the entire neighborhood stays and remains the same. People are kind of following those laws. Someone says, "It's my problem. I do what I want to do in it." Ask Brad Santa. And so, and you'll get that tomorrow. So seeing it, you just need to make sure that if an ordinance is in place, it's in place for purpose. And since I'm, you're a resource, anybody from resources in here, they're professionals. You know that. I live there with resource managers, starting off with a situation that happened and you keep increasing it, keep building it. Before you know it's, because a situation, circumstances, ordinances aren't the same. I used to be zoning this back there. And I was a very small at that time. It was back in the eighties. Now the ordinance is taller than me, wider than me. Because situations came up that caused an ordinance to be ready to deal with some issues. They're about right uses, but I do, will say this one thing quickly, as I take it back to the seat. I think it would change this ordinance, but people should even have a Jiffy Lube, a storage place, and a car wash within a certain radius of one another. Not in stones cast. Every other corner, you got these three different inches. By right, they can be there. The entrepreneurs, the little people by right, they can be there. But it just looks so, you know, like another one, American Boulevard, which is right across from another car wash. I mean, come on. How many times do you march in Congress? But I'm saying, we should, we, those are the kind of things that I would look at. Again, as a member of the council, if staff brings back a recommendation, we have opportunity to vote it up or vote it down. It has to be not all about. So that's what I would suggest.
Thank you. If I could check, I don't know too much about the whole zoning code because it is constantly changing. It is a big document that is constantly, constantly changing. Thank you. That is constantly changing. And so one of the things that I'm going to revisit this that really, I didn't too much agree with, was the one about parking on laws. Because it is, it is, I didn't think it was too fair because some people, you can't park on their street. They don't have a driveway, so where do they go park? They gotta park in their yard. So with that, I think it's very important that we revisit that, also that it is enforced. Because I'm finding out that some of that is not enforced either. So we need to definitely make sure that we, if we are approving an ordinance, zoning ordinance, that we are definitely enforcing if we're gonna do it.
All right, I have two. So I have a minute, so I'm gonna go through all two in a minute. So one, everyone's talking about, and that's parking on the grass. That, to me, is near and dear because we have a lot of senior citizens. And you have two, three vehicles per home. Some people have handicap needs. The streets are full. So they ought to be able to park in their yards. However, abandoned cars should not be allowed. But watching out for the seniors, I think they should have some passes to be placed on their car or placards and let them do so. Secondly, this is on the table, and I'm telling you right now, I'm not in favor of it. Zoning to knock on your door to say, "Let me come in and let me look around in your house." Come on in, to see what improvements you have been done so they can raise your taxes. Number one, COVID is back on the rise again. That's number one. And number two, you have impostors coming out there. We have seniors that are at home all day. They are getting robbed over phone calls. So imagine somebody knocking on your door, coming to your parents' house or your house to say, "Let me look around in this impostor." I don't agree with it.
I can't use my time to say and record straight, so I will use my time to answer the question. And I'll give you an example on zoning. We have been engaging with the food truck association, both on the south side and on the peninsula. Because food trucks, and they are a general businesses, and they, you know, obviously, there's a, there's a demand for the service that they provide, but they're restricted by the current zoning code to only being able to operate in very limited areas of the city. And so we have asked our staff to revisit the zoning code as it applies to food trucks. And so over the past several months, they have been meeting with the food truck association, the Coliseum Business District, the downtown business district, and a number of other areas where it might be possible to allow food trucks. Because we do intend to amend the zoning code to allow those businesses to operate and give them opportunity to be able to do it. So that's, that's just one example where I can think of that we're considering a change to zoning ordinance. I'll give you another example of that is short-term rentals, also known as Airbnb or Furbho or if any of you have ever used those. Right now, there is quite a few short-term rentals operating in our city. You can find them on those websites, those platforms that provide that service or allow you to book that service. But what we want to do is to figure, to determine, you know, what do, what is the appropriate level of regulation for short-term rentals in our city? Because there is some benefit to us by allowing short-term rentals, and that is, as we talked about earlier, about the need for additional hotel rooms to support our tourism conventions and so forth in our city that we don't have enough rooms. Well, short-term rentals can't provide quality accommodations that would support those tourists. But at the same time, we need to be careful because of the impact that we know has occurred with short-term rentals. And that is issues with parking, issues with noise, issues with overcrowding, and parties. And so we intend to address short-term rentals in the very near future because we would have to amend the zoning code, want to allow them to be, to be used. But, I mean, allow them to exist and to provide that service in the city, but at the same time eliminate the, or minimize, as you say, the impact that they would have on the neighborhoods that they exist in. So, but, other than that, we have regular amendments to the zoning code. Sometimes state code changes, and then we have to make changes to the zoning code to make sure that we have mirrors. And so that's how that happens.
So I don't have a specific zoning code that I would propose changing. But I did serve in the Virginia House of Delegates and served on the county cities and towns committee there. All kinds of issues come before that committee to, that had, that had to do with local ordinances. So a lot of those things get approved at the state level and then get pushed down to the localities. And then the localities are bound to enforce those zoning codes. So sometimes our frustration with our council is displaced because some of those maybe kind of crazy ideas got approved up in Richmond. So, you know, I think revisiting our zoning code on a very regular, regimented basis is probably a very good tactic to take. When I served on the school board, we reviewed our policies once every five years, if not more often than that, according to whether or not something came down from the state level for us to change a policy related to Virginia law. And the same thing is true, as Jimmy described, with respect to ordinances. But, yeah, as far as, as far as a specific zoning code, I don't have one that I would change today. But I, you know, if I were to be elected to council, it'd certainly be open to individual concerns about zoning codes. And of course, those are taken out by our planning commission first and then come to the council. But, you know, that's where I am on zoning. I know a lot about it, but I don't have one I want to change today. It doesn't mean I won't have one if a citizen comes to me and has a real concern about that.
Since you got the mic. We'll go, Martha, then that table and this table. This is gonna be the hardest question tonight.
Great. So last shall be first.
That you have to answer. And you can just answer it as concisely as you can, okay? What is your favorite place to spend an hour?
So I have probably maybe four or five favorites. Just one, my favorite.
What is your favorite spending place?
My very favorite is Grand Canyon Nature Preserve. Can I tell you why? Like, just, okay. So I love Grand Canyon Nature Preserve. It's all the way at the end of Beach Road. And, you know, there's about a quarter mile walk to get out to the beach. It's just pure ragged beachfront there. It's just, you know, for me, an opportunity to be close to nature and close to God, if I can say that. Because it just, I don't know, there's something mesmerizing about being, you know, on the Chesapeake Bay, on the waterfront. And you see people scattered about, some sitting, some bathing, some walking. You know, but mostly people just really enjoying and breathing in the air there. It's just a little, kind of a little step away from, you know, the hustle and muscle of our city. We are an urban community and...
Um, we are an urban community, and, and I love it, because I, you know, I've been here for, for most of my life. Um, but, um, it's, it's kind of a nice escape to, to get away and go there. So, if I had to make my, my very favorite place, that's my favorite. I have lots of other places I really like to go in Hampton, uh, but that's my absolute favorite.
Uh, my favorite place to visit is Phoebus. And I live in Buckrow area, but I love going to Phoebus, because I love going to the American Theater, uh, having dinner with my wife, and then going to a show. Um, I like visiting the neat shops that are there, and walking in and speaking with the business owners. A very, a very, uh, hometown feel to it, uh, the art galleries that exist, uh, you know, I spend time there. I know many of the artists by name. So, I enjoy, uh, spending time in Phoebus, and I think it's one of the, uh, special places in Hampton.
Being a Hampton native, Hampton has been my home my entire life. But, uh, like Martha, I have several places that I love to spend with in Hampton. But, uh, being a, a, a history person, I love the historical parts of Hampton. I remember as a little girl going to school, we had, uh, different areas of Hampton that we would visit that were very, you know, historical. We had the St. John's Church, Hampton University, and, uh, other, other places. But I love the, uh, historical parts of Hampton. One that I love is Fort Monroe, that's one that I love. I go, um, well, I've kinda dropped off the bandwagon, but I used to go walk in there, and, uh, I love the scenery outside. And because of the first African landing, when you look out at that water, and you, you just think about that white lion boat coming with those twenty and odd people on it that did not know where, where they were. But that's one of my favorite places to go, because it's very tranquil, and it just allows me to, you know, just to, uh, think, and just to remember what a beautiful place that Ham- Hampton is.
I don't know if you're old or late, but this might be our question. Uh, yeah, what was saying, the case made is a wonderful walk over the top of it. A lot, always something going on in the city. The city's fluid, I'm always, always finding something new that, that catches my interest or, or I enjoy. But I gotta say, I do spend my most time at Buckrow, so I'm gonna have to go with, with Buckrow Beach. Uh, always meet somebody, always, always somebody who's, uh, just willing to engage with you and, uh, and, uh, kinda make your day, and I hope I can do that for other people while I'm there. Uh, and it's awesome beach, the boardwalk is a great walk, there's, there's, I could spend hours there. I don't know what else to say about it, except that it can keep my attention, the people that are constantly in plus there keep my attention too. And I think that's great about it.
I have two places, and I'm gonna go second to first. So, the first place is, uh, the convention center on the terrace. Over the last year, that's where I go to reflect. I can oversee the Coliseum, the water, but the traffic. It amazes me how many people come through Hampton. And it just makes my will spin, because I'm like, if these people can stop here, we can grow this economy. So, that's my place of peace. But secondly, going back to the number one, it's a very unique place in the heart of Coliseum Central. It's called Bowman's Soul and War. And they have the best turkey wings, the best greens, okay? But I have met some amazing people along the way in the last five years that I've been here. I have a lot of people that come through from city council or wherever, but I have a tremendous amount of respect for when they come in and they support me, a small business in Coliseum Central. But more importantly, when I see my teachers, and I see the elderly come in on one good night, which is Thursday, you know, you might tell us there, you say, "They're packed, let you go in," and one person drives one car, so you might see forty cars, thinking it's packed inside. But to see them on Thursday night, to come out, and we all talk about playing here, they come out to have Carrie O'Keefe every Thursday night, like they're gonna church hard to pass the election. But that's where they come to have fun. And for me, when I go home at the end of the night, I know that I have provided someone a place that they can come get something good to eat, have good fellowship, clean, fun, and say, "Have fun," and say, "Go to me."
You know, I'm in here, it's 'cause everybody talks about the tranquility of the places they go, and how nice it is after children. I don't think that word's gonna exist for a while. So, my favorite place is Gotham Hall Park. I have all the space in the world, I'm not sure, uh, when they reopened the park, I can't remember which city council. You two, I appreciate it, because I sit them out there, and I let them go. I let them go. Come back, you want something to drink? Then you go. We're gonna leave at five o'clock, you go home, get dinner, take a shower, go to sleep, and I get to have some me time. So, Gotham Hall Park is my place, and also, I'm not sure if anybody knew, I didn't know this until I was older, but there's actually a RV park back there. I had actually no idea, you know, you can go right on the backside, and, and, you know, me, I'm not particularly having the, uh, uh, military or retired or keeping my exact duty. You go around on four uses, you can get a, uh, an RV or a travel trailer for a hundred dollars a day. Park that thing right out there, have it powered and everything else out there, and I had no idea. Best thing ever, because I coached football. Football, I ask all y'all, if you have kids, all the games are at Gotham Hall Park. In the summertime, it is about ninety-eight degrees outside. When everybody else is under those canopies, I'm in the RV, you're soaking up the heat here. So, Gotham Hall Park is my place.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I like a number of places, but I do love Fort Monroe. My wife and I go there, we walk over here, it's like we're in love, in like forty years. She walks real fast, I can slow her down. But we'll walk the entire boardwalk, and sometime I'll say, "Carrie, you, you walking too fast, you get ahead of me," and I'll stay back here and watch the fort. Uh, but to reflect and to think about the history, I love this one too, think about the history of Fort Monroe, and I think about the, uh, first generation Africans and, uh, sacrifices that they made to build this country. Slavery started here and ended there. And we corrected history, the Jamestown story was not correct, we corrected it, and we corrected here in Hampton. So, Fort Monroe is nostalgic, uh, it brings back a lot of good memories. I remember as a little kid going to the Case Make Museum. And, uh, we would go through and read all the little packets of, you know, the history and, uh, just, it just brings back some good memories, because that stuff is a field trip for me in elementary school. And so, we were looking forward to go to that and other things. But Fort, the fort has been and is a national monument. Uh, of course, the great president Barack Obama did that, he took his act, he signed that act, and became a national monument, so something to be proud of. I tell people, if you look at my literature, the backdrop of my literature is Fort Monroe. You know, if you recognize, that's Fort Monroe, that's the great fort. And so, I'm proud to say that, uh, we have a great institution here, a national park. People come from all over the world to go to Fort Monroe, and I'm a people watcher. And so, as people walk in, out of the boardwalk, come doing this, I'm watching, looking at, talking to people, "How are you?" Talking to dogs, 'cause one time you bring your dog out there, I don't think, yeah, now, the season's over. Of course, season's starting, you can bring your dogs. But it's a great place to be, and I invite, uh, people coming to town, "What, what, what are you going to Hampton?" And I tell them, "Fort Monroe, Virginia Air Space Museum, NASA Landline, Hampton University, uh, the rooftop, uh, just, uh, downtown Hampton, Phoebus, I found this raised, it was a Hope Street, uh, Tennis Lane, Mellon Street, all the oldest cities raised there." And so, we've got a lot going on in my city, it's a progressive city, and I'm gonna keep it flowing, and Hampton a destination in our past.
With this question, thank you for sharing your favorite place. Interestingly enough, um, everybody was going that way. Over that way. It'd be lovely to have a cultural arts center over here, right off six sixty-four. If the history that's over there can be transported over here, and then our children can walk here, as opposed to going there. Anyhow, uh, that's my spin. Uh, we see some school court members in here, welcome tonight, we will, uh, we share the bad, we will all come and share another day, because we know we're gonna be in a meeting tonight. Um, and I know we're looking at, what, what time is it? Eight twelve, okay, we're gonna try to wrap this up pretty shortly. Um, y'all tired? Y'all, y'all tired? Someone out there looking like y'all asleep. Okay, to this question, and I'm gonna start with, um, Randy this time, um, and we'll go this way. Um, there's been a lot of discussion tonight about, um, projects, what, what needs to be done, what should be done. Um, and the question is a two-fold question. First of all, how would you evaluate whether or not a project was worth implementing? What considerations or factors would go into that decision? And when you come to them, like I said, you're never getting real slowly, because some people just came in, and they don't have no idea, uh, who you are. So, uh, beginning with Randy, we're working our way off from there. The question again is, how would you evaluate whether or not a project was worth implementing? And what considerations or factors would go into that decision?
Okay, Randy Bowman, um, the projects, I would have to look at, is there a need? After I look at, is there a need, I would have to talk to the citizens. Find out from these citizens. Then I would have to look at the cost, not just the short-term cost, but the long-term cost of what it's gonna take for that. Lastly, I would have to look at maintenance for that, because along with that, that's funding. So, with every opportunity that we have, we have to understand that there is funding that is earmarked, but we have to look at how much it's gonna cost us, so we're not wasting taxpayers' money.
I would say income, usage, and then once again, that's pretty much the main thing, income and usage. I look at a project right now that I honestly think we are long overdue to do. Hey, look here, I appreciate the Hampton Coliseum, I love it, I've walked across the stage, my brothers walked across the stage, I'm pretty sure those walked across the stage. That place was implemented in nineteen sixty-eight. It is time for us to redo the Hampton Coliseum. If we wanna start bringing in bigger shows, we wanna start having venues, we wanna start having, uh, just any type of conventions, the Hampton Coliseum, once again, is, is not mine, it's out there. All it takes is four, new boardrooms to do it first, and there'll be no reason to have anybody come to show us here, because they'll just go to a newer venue, a new boardroom. It is long overdue, and like I said, I'm a little tired, so I, I can't do my math. We're gonna say it's older than pretty much all of us in here, so I think it's well overdue.
Thank you, the conference room is fifty-two years old.
Thank you, sir.
When I look at a project.
Excuse me, excuse me, say your name.
Steven Brown. When I met my wife, I told her my name was Steven Wonder. Yeah, insurance too. Uh, I, I look at, first of all, is it necessary? What value the citizens have? For instance, is a residential project, does it enhance the neighborhood? Does it bring up the housing values? Uh, if it's a commercial, uh, property, a commercial, uh, project, I look at the tax base. I look at, is it a new revenue stream for our city? And I, I think that's important, uh, as you evaluate, uh, projects. Uh, also, was enough information shared about what's being built? One of my colleagues asked me, "What's being built across from Liberty Baptist Church, the condominiums and townhomes?" But, uh, will that bring up the neighborhood? Because when you go to resell, uh, if you maintain your property, if it's residential, you want them to maintain their property. Am I right? Uh, so housing values are important, tax base, revenue is important. And so, all these things go into, uh, making this, what I call this gumbo, uh, that comes out good, and the root is good, because all the factors were considered. You talk to the right people, uh, you have right open doors of communication, people were dialoguing about this project. Even the people opposed it, uh, there's some people who oppose projects, because they don't have all the information. And I like to look for a win-win. Wasn't it a win-win? Did neighbors agree with it? Did business people agree with it? Uh, you know, and what does it do for our city? Is it value-added? That's what I look at. And so, uh, I've done it on council, I've looked at the numbers, uh, I've looked at the project, I've looked at the schematic drawings, the architecture design, does it fit the integrity of the community? That's some things I take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, when, when I make decisions, um, I, I see, I'm Martha Muddler. I'm so sorry, I forgot, uh, to tell you that, but I'm, I'm Martha. Um, when I make a decision, uh, and, and, and any of the rules that I've had in the past, and I, if I were on council, I would make them the same way. I read as much information about the proposal of the project as I can. I read whatever is provided in the documents, uh, that are, that are given to, to me. Uh, I do my homework, I research, I, um, look at the data, um, and, and consider the data and the impact that the data has on the community. I consider the cost of a project, I consider the impact to citizens. I consider the impact to our citizens as taxpayers. And, um, you know, uh, we were doing some predictive index work at, um, my office today, and, um, I happen to be like, um, well, way over here in terms of the process. Like, I'm very committed to, to process, so that's how I go through making a decision about what I'm gonna go on. Uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm also considered to be a very objective decision maker. So, data is really important to me, um, sustainability in a project is very important to me. Um, those are the things that go into a decision, um, for me.
Thank you. Uh, Jimmy Gray, and, um, I, uh, I think, you know, we probably covered a very extensive list of, of, of ways to evaluate, uh, projects, uh, some of them are covered in an earlier, uh, response. But, you know, every project, you know, has a different meaning, uh, for, and, and I'll say that, for example, uh, you've acquired a site that you've been holding for a while, because you, you're, you're looking for a specific kind of project to go on that particular site. Uh, it could be laying there holding for a hotel or some other higher use. Uh, and so, you know, when you get a proposal on it, sometimes those proposals come with, uh, a request for some kind of assistance from, from the city, uh, whether that be some infrastructure improvements, or, uh, considerations on taxes, future taxes, and things of that nature. So, you, you have to determine whether this is the right project, or is it the right deal? And is it a good deal for the citizens of Hampton? And so, you have those conversations, you look at, uh, for example, we have six master plans throughout the city. We have downtown, Coliseum, Buckrow, Phoebus, and Kickertown Quarter. We have established master plans for those areas, and so those master plans kind of guide, uh, development in those areas. And so, we, we look at the master plan, is this a project, or is this the type of development that fits with where we want, uh, this particular area to go based on, on the input of the master plan? Now, all those master plans were created with input from citizens, and we have updates. They are created with input from citizens as well. And so, you know, looking at the plans of that place, looking at the, um, cost to the city, and then, uh, lastly, I wanna say, as I mentioned, high some best use, this is the best use of this particular site for, for the project that's being proposed, and what is the best benefit, or the good benefit to the city? And I think you have to weigh all those factors in. And again, at the end of the day, you know, there's always public hearings associated with, uh, projects of that type, and so you wanna get input from the citizens, and those who are maybe impacted by a particular development, and all that kind of, uh, allows you to evaluate the appropriateness of, of a project for a particular area.
Home Harper, well, first of all, you have to review all of the details of the project. Then you have to see what impact it will have on the neighborhood.
Then you have to see what impact it will have on the neighborhood or the business. Making sure that there is, whether or not it's a neighborhood, the citizens or the business owners are involved in the decision-making process. You have to be sure how is this gonna benefit the city as a whole? Then you have to be sure to see, is this going to improve or bring in tax revenue? Improve our services? Or is it gonna be a tax burden to the business or to the citizen?
My name is Chris Matthews. I'm not gonna speak too much on, uh, businesses and personal properties because I feel like we've discussed that plenty tonight and that's beating a dead horse at this point. But for city-owned projects and properties that will be developed, there's a lot to consider. Whether it's how much the city needs it, what the demand for it is, whether or not it's gonna produce, uh, at least enough of a revenue to sustain itself, whether or not it will be utilized to a point of being relevant. Because right now, I, I, I look at a lot of the projects around the city and I don't see those needs being met. Uh, the Coliseum is underutilized. Uh, it is in need of some updating and maintenance. Uh, we can look at the Bula Sports Place, which is terribly underutilized. And it has, uh, a great arena for us to become a little sports hub within the Hampton Roads area and bring people in. So we're not getting the revenue we could be getting from it. We can look at the Aqua Place, which is coming soon. I did not hear a demand for that. And I gotta put on my, uh, little personal bit, I'm upset that it's done on credit. That it is, even if we have the, the city does have an amazing credit rating. I will not disparage the city at all for that. It has potential to earn revenue. But I don't like the idea of putting, uh, massive projects on credit for myself as a taxpayer. So we have to look at all these aspects, whether or not we can utilize it to its fullest extent. Whether or not we can keep it full, uh, keep, keep arenas full, keep, uh, concerts full, venues full, and whether or not we can stay booked year-round. Because all those things is what's gonna keep the revenue flowing to repay everything that goes into that, that establishment as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and this is gonna be my last question, because it's right at eight-thirty. And we wanna be, I promise to everybody's time tonight. I wanna thank you all for showing up, and I wanna thank the candidates for being here tonight, all for taking this time to share with us. Uh, and the last question for tonight will be this, um, what do you hope to accomplish as a city councilman? Um, let's start with Marlon. And look out the hallway, and Randy will be last. What do you hope to accomplish as a city councilman?
So I'll check for you, Marlon. What I hope to accomplish is to bridge that gap, to more or less establish that community engagement, to, to open those, those lanes of communication, and make sure the lanes of communication are two ways. I don't ever wanna have a situation where, you know, once again, everybody's confused, nobody knows what's going on, or they don't feel like they're being engaged enough, or, you know, it just don't feel like that, that, that transparency is there. So one thing that I wanna do, and if you guys bless me and put me in that position, in that level of influence, I, that's something I promised I would do. I would absolutely open those two lanes of communication. Because you can find me, I'm from here, I'm around here, I coached, I'm fully ingrained in this community. You can find me, and if you have any concerns, talk to me, I'm not scared of anybody. So.
First of all, I wanna thank the, the school board, the council board for their support tonight. Have us hear the issues and talk about what our vision is for the city. I, I hope to, if I'm fortunate to be re-elected, I wanna be able to continue to do what I've always done. Been a leader, been a visionary, been responsive, been a bridge builder and collaborative with my colleagues on council. You don't get anything done on council, being an island, being alone, being isolated, being obstructious, being obstructious. You get things done, sharing our lives, sharing your experiences, dialoguing, picking the phone up and calling. And, uh, four members of council, that's the majority when it comes to, uh, decisions that are made on the council. Sometimes things are super majority. But, uh, I wanna continue to also, uh, build our infrastructure, make our neighborhoods safe, continue to fully fund the awesome, award-winning Hampton City Schools. We got school board members here tonight who are committed, dedicated, making children in our school systems the best and brightest, the talented, and can compete in the global economy in the world. I wanna continue to do that. Uh, I wanna continue to make sure that our city's citizens, uh, are not converted with taxes, they can stay in their homes. You don't have to worry about that they, at, at the golden years of their lives, having to move or relocate. And, and I wanna continue to make sure that when you call me, I'm responsive. I want boots on the ground, I wanna carry a woman cooler than that. And I wanna do what my mother taught me to do. Treat people fair, treat people the way you wanna be treated, and love everybody. Even the non-love, she said, it's a son, to go to heaven, you may not like him, but you gotta love him. So I wanna be able to do that as a member of council. Uh, and I certainly humbly ask for your support on November eighth. You have three votes for the four-year seat, one vote for the two-year seat. I just ask for one. Let us keep moving Hampton in the positive direction, so Hampton again is not a drive-through, pass-through, run-over, but we are a destination. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening.
Yeah, I forgot what the question was.
Maybe you repeat?
Yeah.
What do you hope to accomplish as a city councilman?
So, I hope to accomplish as a city council member, um, a positive impact on our community. The coastal resilience that, uh, we need to ensure as a council is something I am very focused on, because it will ensure the vibrancy of this community. I am, uh, very encouraged and, um, and hopeful that the, the work that has already begun on gun violence will be continued. Uh, I wanna have an impact on crime reduction in this community. Um, I wanna have an impact on economic development growth in this community. I wanna continue to have an impact on our public education in Hampton and ensure that funding and resources are available to our school system to accomplish the, the, the best and, and highest caliber education for our young people. I'm a collaborator, I'm a consensus builder. Talk to that, that girl back there, that school board. Um, I, I know, uh, how to work in a group, um, of seven, and, um, and then a group of one hundred, uh, in the general of seven. Um, I know how to build consensus and collaborate with others to move an idea forward. Um, and so I wanna have a positive impact on this community that I have, uh, have lived in and adored for so many years. Uh, I've, I've, uh, raised my children here, um, so I'm a mother, a wife, a grandmother, a sister, an aunt. Um, and, and, and I still have all those great nieces and, and family in this community. So it's important to me that, uh, we make Hampton the best place that it can possibly be, that we continue to be an inviting community, that we, that we capitalize on the assets of our community, both the physical assets, the waterfront and so forth. We capitalize on our human capital, our diversity, which is our strength in Hampton. Um, so, uh, as, as, uh, my friend Steve Brown said, we do have an election on November eighth. Uh, we have, um, uh, five folks running for three seats on the council. I'd be honored to have one of your votes. And, um, and if you choose to vote early, that'd be great too. But, uh, I'm just, uh, honored and, and thank you all so much for hosting us tonight. Um, and, um, and just hope that you'll consider my, uh, background, uh, my combination of professional experience, my, uh, my experience as a public servant, and, uh, and find that a unique skill set that would be, uh, uh, benefit to our city council. Thank you so much.
Well, I want Hampton to be the place, it's the choice for raising a family, for retiring, for enjoying the waterfront. We have a vision statement on our website that our city council created. It says that Hampton is a vibrant waterfront community with four hundred years of history and innovation to create a better future. And that's exactly what we as council members are doing. Sometimes we have to deal with the immediate, such as, you know, the crime that's in front of us right now. But really, the majority of our work is continuing to, uh, build on the assets that we have, build on the past decisions that have created a great city that we have today, so that we can create a better s- future for, you know, the generations to come. And so I think we have a great responsibility to, uh, take care of what we have here in this great city, positioned on the east coast, uh, you know, with the great location and the great beach, beaches, and the diversity that we have in our community. Diversity is so important because the, a diverse city of like ours creates, you know, we, we build festivals and restaurants and those kinds of things that, that come because they cater to a diverse community. And so, yeah, when people come to visit, they find so many different things that they can enjoy in our city because it's all been created as a result of a great culture and a great diversity. And I wanna continue to build on that. You know, I've been on city council for six years, uh, you know, shared a little bit about my background. I started here as a fire chief and, uh, rose up the assistant city manager and then become a city councilman because of my commitment to community service and what I wanted to do for this great city. And so I appreciated the opportunity to serve, you know, the past six years. And I would appreciate, uh, your support to, uh, give me a, a, additional opportunity to continue the work that we've done as a city council and as a community here in Hampton.
Did you say we have, uh, after this, we were gonna have a, a closing statement? Or?
Yes, after this, please first put your hand in.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So if some of you are going, sum it up.
That's, that's why, that's why I asked. Oh, I would go ahead and just sum it up. Thank you. Um, I would like to continue to enhance the quality of life of the citizens of the city of Hampton. When I talk of to business owners as well as rural citizens, I found they want five things. They want to have a good job, to take care of their families, they would like to live in a safe place, they would like to have good, affordable housing, they would like their children to go to good schools, and they would like great wholesome entertainment for their whole family. And if we continue to build upon those things, thus enhancing the quality of life for our citizens, we will always have them in mind. I always want to bring hope to the city of Hampton, meaning hospitality, opportunity, prosperity, and engagement. I am proud of the progress that we have made as a city in strides in economic development. Our schools are a hundred percent accredited, but I do believe that we have room for opportunities in improving our housing stock, doing more in entertainment, as I, as I just stated. But, I just hope to bring my intergenerational leadership to see change and hope for the future. So, with that being said, there is always hope for Hampton. Now, in my race, I'm running in a special race, you only get one vote. And so I would love to have your vote so I can contribute to the progress, bring my skills, and do the job and the work on Hampton City Council. Because I'm ready to work, I'm ready to serve, and I am ready to learn. Thank you very much.
As a city councilman, uh, my goal would be to ensure that I can lead by example. Right now, as just a community member, as a citizen, I am in my community volunteering my time. Uh, I am organizing with other groups, uh, across our community. Uh, just this week, uh, Veteran Student Association over at Virginia Penn Community College, uh, I got them to vote and we are now, we're gonna start to adopt a spot with that group right now. It's just one more group of people who can get more deeply ingrained in our community and help present it the best way possible. These are the basic things that, that, that I do right now. I'm working on a five oh one C for veterans to work with, uh, with our youth. Uh, youth all the way to eighteen years old to sort of have an AA style program to make sure that they have a mentor, tutor, sponsor through their life in case there's anything going on. And they have a crisis that they need help with, or they're a disabled student, that, uh, can work with a disabled veteran, uh, who can share an understanding of having a, a lack of mobility or other disabilities. Uh, this is right now, and if I can continue to lead with this example, uh, then I can inspire more people to, to join in and be a part of something, uh, bigger than their, their themselves. It all starts right here in your neighborhood though. If we don't start taking care of each other and the people around us and the, and the neighborhoods we live in, then we're gonna end up with the same neighbors who can tell us everything that's wrong, but can't offer us a solution. And I'm hoping to work towards that solution. Thank you.
When asked the question, who's Randy Bowman? You'll probably be told this, he's a certain leader. He works, he's steadfast in the community, has always done so. That's who they would take you Randy Bowman is. There's a scripture that I love, and it says, "May the work I've done speaks for me." I love it. So, let's move forward. Bringing to the city, as councilman, I promise you that I'm gonna continue what I've already started. My work's not over yet. I have worked with the city council, planning commissioner, and I was the driver of change and ordinance that has helped me stay in business. It has helped other businesses behind me stay afloat and bring in other income. It has also assisted the city in bringing in income of revenue behind an ordinance after a year of repeatedly going to the city, asking for this ordinance to be changed. And I wanna thank y'all for doing so. I'm gonna continue by working with the school board. Outstanding job, being a hundred percent accredited, great job. That's something that Hampton should be proud of. I wanna continue working with the chief of police, we have a new chief of police. We have decreased crime, more so than any other city in the seven-five city. That's to be permitted. Now, through the lens of my eyes, and the things that I've gone through as a business owner, I firsthand can help the citizens, as well as the city council, bring a new vision to small business growth. As I have stated, we need innovators to show people how to run and open a business. We are running out of space for development. We have older buildings that we can transform in and get our revenue running. If we don't, and like I said earlier, there's a nine, there are nineteen percent growth is from revenue from businesses. The five-year plan is to get to twenty-five percent. If we don't get businesses in there to drive our economy, it's gonna fall back on us, the citizens, and our taxes are gonna be raised. So let's go ahead and let's get in front of this, let's build and bring in new businesses so we can grow the economy. Lastly, I am Randy Bowman. I humbly solicit your support on November the eighth. Thank you very much.
Thank you all candidates for your time tonight, we really appreciate you being here. More importantly, more importantly, thank yourself, because if you didn't show up, they'd be talking to these walls. So thank yourself. Do me a favor, if this is, if this was Sunday morning, and this is what I tend to do on Sunday morning, look at the person beside you and say, neighbor?
Neighbor.
The best blessing I've had all week?
The best blessing I've had all week.
Is sitting beside me right now. Again, for those persons who may have an individual question and wanna ask any one of the, uh, candidates individually, you can feel free to do so. Uh, at this time, we will call this gathering officially done. You all have a safe evening. Before we leave and y'all start running, let's pray, God, we thank you. We thank you for all that our news have heard. We thank you, oh God, for all that our... We thank you, oh God, for all that our hearts have received. And we ask you now to help us to disciple what the next step is for all of us. We thank you for leadership. We ask you to give them wisdom, give us wisdom, and help us now to lead this place and follow the leading of your spirit. In Christ Jesus' name we pray, amen. Feel free to ask me a question, if you have any.